All right, welcome to the meeting, tonight's meeting. The first item is the warrant. Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Unanimous? The minutes of August 18th. Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Unanimous. Invitation to speak? Okay, we'll go to our first appointment. We have an application for change of manager, Sons of Italy Dramatic and Sportsman's Club Incorporated. Sons of Italy Dramatic Sports Club. Change of manager. Floyd Brothers, Sam, to Michael R. Eckerfreska. The information, comment of town officials. Building Commissioner. Occupant load, occupancy is about fifty people. No handicap access. Do you think someday we can maybe put?
What?
Okay.
What I'm doing right now is, Mark is coming down there and I have to have some hot top repaired.
Okay.
We do have a ramp out back. And what I'm gonna do is get rid of the wooden wrap. I'm gonna make it all, all hot top. Whether I gotta put railings in, yeah, I'll find, because the back door is big enough to get a wheelchair in. We've had wheelchairs in there before.
Okay. Because I think, you know, I don't think it would cost a lot of money.
It should be done, it should be done before the winter.
Yeah.
They do have some holes in the parking lot out there, too.
So you'll address that and maybe give the administrator?
I'll take care of it.
Couple of months, see what's going on? Okay.
Mark's kinda busy right now. He told me when the cold, when it cools down, he'll be around.
All right. Taxes, no problem, fire department, no issues. Everything else seems to be in order. And, okay, so Sam, you've done a good job down there and I want to thank you for that. You know, anytime the town came by and you worked along with the town and you're a good person and I'm sure Mike will follow in your footsteps. So Mike, anything that you're gonna be changing as far as?
No, I was trying to keep it all the same, Dean. All I wanna do is, I talked to Mr. Garabedian through Mr. Evans earlier and I thought this would be done by now, but with the paperwork, I got a little tied up. And I'm just gonna get the kitchen back up and running so that people can donate, you know, back to the club. You know, have like, get it going like it was back in the seventies, the eighties and the nineties. You know what I mean? Around Christmas time, around the holidays. You know, because it used to hop, you know what I mean? And we had a lot of fun down there, you know?
Sure.
Once the old timers left.
Right.
They're all gone.
And it's nice to see that the Cravellows was back in operation, so they have an owner in there.
Marty's Kitchen bought that or something, I guess, yeah.
All right, so the other thing we're doing here, this is for a new manager, Michael Eckerfreska. And Brian, any questions, comments?
No, no questions. Best of luck with everything.
Thank you.
No questions, I'd move to approve.
Okay, motion by Bill, seconded by Brian, on naming of the new manager, Michael Eckerfreska. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Oppose? Unanimous. Okay, you're all set.
Thank you guys.
Thanks, Sam. Goodbye, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay, Sam. All right, right on time, seven oh five. Several months ago, Scotty had some ideas of doing something for Main Street, as far as sprucing it up. Holiday decorations, different seasons and all that. So a group of residents came forward to try to assist Scotty. They've been working very diligently, very hard. They have a wonderful proposal with the appropriating some money for wreaths, banners for the four seasons. And, you know, we look forward to the presentation, because I think this is something that, you know, would be great for the Main Street. And, you know, on behalf of the board, I applaud you. So with that, I'll turn it over to the chairman, Scotty.
All right, yeah, as you know, we were here.
Just let me name the members besides Scotty, Liz Fernandez, Kathy Mitchell, Amy Samborn, Claudia Scandoni, Peter Scandoni, Laura Shirocco, Beverly Swaima, Rosemary Treadle, Nancy Wozick, Jen Yon. And are there other people here tonight who are members of the committee, too?
Not sure.
Yep.
I know Maria Romagnoli's here, I don't know if anybody else, but you can certainly name those people.
Okay. Yeah, so we got together last night, we talked about it, and since then, we've formed the committee with the people you just named. The reason being, like we talked about before, the wreaths we had put up last year were, you know, they're twenty years old. And we started with forty-four, we ended up with, I think, nineteen last year. Between the lights going, the wreaths falling apart, and they were very dirty and just not usable anymore. And then we had the problem of taking them down. They stayed up very long and got them up late, they stayed up too long. I just feel there's a better, there was a better way to do this. You know, it used to be all volunteer and we went through a lot of volunteers over the years and the, to get anybody to do anything last couple of years has been difficult. And I don't blame the same people always doing it and they wear them out, basically. So when we formed this committee, you know, we talked about a lot of ideas. You know, obviously, the wreath we wanted to have back up, you know, that's where we started. But traveling around to other towns, which you'll see in this little PowerPoint we have. You know, some examples of things other towns do. Banners, you know, those are summer banners. So, you know, we looked into doing a seasonal banner. Let's say like a snowflake, similar to that right there that you see hanging on the wall. You know, put up in November, taken down the end of winter. You know, then maybe changing the banner for the summertime and, you know, we went over all these different things. And obviously, there's a huge cost associated with it all. And then we figured, you know, we saw another town with, you'll see American flags, you know, for Veterans Day and all the holidays that are, you know, right for, well, American flags should be up year round, in my opinion, but, you know, we're gonna start with the holidays, you know, at first. So we, you know, added American flags to it. So at this point, we have a wreath for the holidays, a Christmas, sorry, a winter banner, a American flag, and we're gonna do a summer banner. They also make flag banners, I guess you wanna call them to me. I didn't like that and we kind of wanted to stay away from that. We wanna go with a real flag, a three by five flag. One that won't wrap up on itself, it has a spinning tube inside it, it will always hang that way. It may wrap up for a little while, it'll unwrap itself, so we don't have to constantly fix it. And, go to the next one. And the wreaths, they had different style wreaths we looked at. These were, you're starting getting on a very expensive side when you have to get one that big to actually go around the globe. So we kinda decided not to do that. So we're gonna, we're gonna do the same style wreath we did last time, that we had up there, one side of the pole, bow on it. And that will be on every other pole through the whole Main Street, that'll be forty-four poles. So, basically, we have eighty-eight poles. Now, what we're thinking during the winter is, the winter banners will be on forty-four of the poles from November to the end of March. And the wreaths will be forty-four wreaths, every other pole, from November before the Christmas parade to, we're thinking mid-January. We wanna take them down, we don't wanna leave them up too long, obviously. Then, the end of March, you can probably go to the next one and get the schedule. Well, that's the detail on the banners, I'll go back to that. But we have a time up and down. We wanna keep the up and down to a minimum for the fact that we, you know, would like the town employees to do this, so it's done correctly, it's done on time, and we know it's gonna be done. So, basically, wreaths up in November, taken down mid-January. The winter banners will go up the same time as the wreaths before the Santa Parade and we'll take those down the end of March. Now, when we take those down the end of the March, we would like to put the American flags up, which we're only gonna do thirty. I don't wanna overwhelm the town with flags, but thirty, we're gonna spread them out throughout the town. And the summer banners will go up. Can you go back? We have a picture of the summer banner up, somewhere, the other way. Next one. One more. One more. That's organized. Right there. The summer banner will be similar to the one on the right, with the bicycle on it, flowers and so forth. So, that will go up the end of March with the American flags. That will stay up until probably mid-November when we put the, the winter banners in the reefer. So we're trying to keep it a minimum amount up and down, basically. And maybe in the future, if we have different banners and stuff, we can change them more often. But we're starting with the minimum, but yet having banners up year round. That's, that was our main goal. So, go back. Keep going. That's the kind of wreath we're gonna be putting up. It's actually that one right there, very similar. Supposed to be durable, I think the warranty was, remember what the warranty was? It's a five-year warranty on it. But we got twenty years out of the last ones, I would expect that to be fifteen, twenty years. LCD lights, rather than the ones we've used in the past, a little brighter. Two bows, right, we're doing two bows. This was just the basic layout of the banners, all the different sizes for different sized poles. Now, what we did figure out, because of the way our poles sit, they're twenty feet off the, twenty inches off the curb. So we can put an eighteen-inch banner facing the street, so you can actually see it. Because if we turn them on the inside, like a lot of towns do, the trees will bury them, you won't see them. But we'll have the room to do that, we'll be out of our way. You know, I made sure that our machines can fit under and all that, we should be fine.
Scotty, you said it's three to five years as far as useful life?
Yeah, well, the banner's a three-year warranty, I think, on everything. Is that what they were? Depending what company you go to, there's all different, you know, warranties and different materials and, I mean, you think leaving them up six months in the winter, they're gonna take a beating, so, I mean, that's for the worst case, you know? And that's a picture of the flag that we actually put up in front of the town hall. It was kind of a test flag. And that's when we realized right away that the flag wraps up and it's not gonna, you know, we're not gonna keep unwrapping them. So we went with a different pole. And that's a three by five. Now, installation, I will take it upon myself and the highway department to do the actual hardware installation during the day. We can do that from the sidewalk side. But as far as putting the flags up, putting the banners up, putting the wreaths up, that has to be done from the street side, because they're on the street side. And that has to be done at night. I've done it in the past, it's a good four-hour project. You know, and what I wanna do is, I wanna get the employees to do it. Now, I know there's overtime involved and all that, so we have figured that in there. Now, we're looking at four employees, two firefighters with their bucket truck, one highway worker, one parks worker. And that way there, we know it's done. We know the stuff's gonna be taken care of, we don't have to beg and borrow, and I will volunteer, and I'm sure people on this committee will volunteer to help wherever it's needed. Now, we're figuring four people at four hours, every time they go up, every time they come up down.
That's to put up everything.
Yes. Now, that's, it's pretty much, it's, I don't wanna say it's a guess, I've been there, I've done it. So I know, the first few times, it may take a little longer, but we figured for all that. That's just, just to make sure it's done, that's the most important thing. Storage, I mean, I have plenty of room at the highway department. You know, I know that the problem we've had at the youth center is it's very dirty down there. And we've been stacking them in one of those rooms and not cleaning them, not taking care of them, not changing the lights, not doing anything to the wreaths besides take them up, put them down. So at least, if we know they're at the highway department, they can be taken care of, restored correctly and, you know, folded and whatever has to be done. So that, that'll be taken care of by us. So we get to the funding. The forty-four wreaths, forty-four banners, the thirty flags, all the hardware, put them up, take them down. The first year is twenty thousand dollars. That's what we are at, here to ask you guys for. Going forward, I think it's three to five thousand dollars a year for the maintenance and the up and down of them. So this is, this'll be the big money year, and after that, we're thinking around three to four thousand dollars.
I think we can handle it. Scotty, you mentioned that the, it would stop at town hall. What about going a little bit farther down?
We're gonna go as far as the poles go. We'll start at the first pole and we'll go up, the black poles. I don't wanna start hooking them to, you know, other poles. I mean, maybe in the future, we can stretch it out. But, you know, we'd like to do more towards Draper, Draper Park at some time also. You know, get back into that someday. But this is just a starting step. I mean, the other towns have them all around us. And we've seen things like sponsor a flag, families actually sponsor one. The flags are like sixty dollars a piece, seventy dollars a piece, it's not huge, you know? Maybe in the future, we look at doing something like that. But we like to at least kick it off, you know, this way.
Well, you know, I think in the past few years, I think a lot of the residents have been saying, you know, why can't, why can't, why can't we have nice wreaths? Why can't we have stuff at Draper Park like before? You know, especially for the kids going up, you know, it's beautiful. But like you said, money, volunteers, going to the same people all the time. So I think, you know, you and your committee have done a very nice job.
It's tough. I watched Sue Clark always struggle to get people to do it. I totally understand, you know, it's, it's a long night.
And a few times, we had some volunteers from the fire department to try to raise money, you know, and we'd raise like fifty dollars in one day. I mean, it's not gonna be.
Yeah, and going forward, I mean, when it comes time to change the banners, maybe we try to raise money at that point for that, you know?
But you know, I think a lot of times with time, if it's for a town function, for the residents, if it's needed, if it's important, then we should support it.
Absolutely.
Because that we can do it right.
I think it'll make a huge difference downtown. Driving through town today, I'm looking around, looking at the trees, now cleaning, there's all the new sidewalks, the new road, it is beautiful. It really is. Now, to stick a banner out there, I think that would make it that much better.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
No, great job.
Thank you.
I think it's a great idea and I think we should go forward and go to the board members now. Brian?
Thank you. Thank you very much for the work that you did and the presentation. There's obviously a lot of time put into it. But you said you're, you're looking for us for the money?
Well, I didn't know, you know.
Why wouldn't this be a town meeting article?
Well, it is. I'm just, I guess I'm asking to sponsor the article.
Okay, all right, yeah, because I mean, I think that's what needs to be done, this particular item. Not dissimilar from the fireworks. I mean, clearly, this is something that I think the town needs to, you know, discuss and debate and decide for themselves. So, I mean, I, I think the appropriate vehicle is a town meeting article, particularly we have a town meeting coming up.
Yeah, that's what you wanted, right?
Right, that's, that's what I meant.
Okay. Things, okay, so, you know, we get them up and, and you know, like you said, they're gonna be up, the flags, the banners, you know, for a fairly significant amount of time. Something's gonna happen, you know? Something's gonna tear or a pole's gonna get stuck or, do you know what I'm saying? So, so how have you, you know, accommodated that?
Is?
You know what I mean? Not, not, not the, not the whole scale, you know, taking everything up and everything down. The one or two items that, you know, could fall in disrepair while, while they're up there and kinda make the whole presentation look a little askew.
Right. I, I think as far as repairing one or two items, you know, while they're up, I think that's something that can be done during the day. But to expect, you know, all of them to be repaired one night, no. So I don't see that as an issue, even from my department, you know? That's something we definitely can do. I mean, and as far as replacing broken stuff, that four thousand has a little, little money in there for replacement. You know, it's just, the overall cost at the beginning is very expensive, but.
No, I know, but, and I know, you know, the replacement costs, sometimes that's even easier than to get the labor to do it.
Right.
You know what I mean? If it's one or two poles, you know what I mean? You're gonna be able to, you know, get a guy there and do it when there's a snowstorm come in and, you know, that road needs, do you know what I'm saying? And, and, I mean, how, you know what I mean? How are we envisioning the overall means? Because, I mean, you can go forward in this plan and it can look great for a couple of weeks or a month or two months, and then all of a sudden, this one goes down, that one goes down.
Right, you are talking banners up for six months.
You guys are busy, the fire department's busy, you know what I'm saying? How are you planning for that?
We will have to figure out how to do that during the day. I don't wanna, you know, bring in, you know, multiple model employees a night to fix one flag, you know? If it can be done during the day, we'll do it during the day.
All right, let me ask you this. So, so what was the prime consideration to pay overtime to town employees? I would imagine there has got to be a private company contractor or whatever that would do this. You know, similar to the artificial field, you know, you could, you know, rake it yourself or you could, you could hire a contractor to do it.
Few prices we did get from contractors, electricians and tree companies, was a thousand plus. For four of our town employees, it's less, it's seven, eight hundred dollars. So that, that was the reason. And employees wanna do it, obviously. They don't wanna spend their time doing it without getting paid. And that's, that's pretty much what we get. You know, and it's important that we are able to use the fire department's bucket truck. We need to use that to do this. You know, and no employee, you know, they've done it in the past and they don't, they don't wanna, they just don't wanna do it. Time is limited and they just don't wanna go out there and do it for nothing. You know, and I, you know, I did it for nothing for years, I understand, but.
No, I know. That, that's, to me, not a viable option.
No, I know.
But, you know, as opposed to, you know, distracting town resources from paying a company to just maintain, and then the company can maintain it. You know, if, if, if flag number twenty-two, you know, goes down, you put a call in, hey, you know, you gotta come over here and fix flag number twenty-two. So, I mean, you know, to me, as, as I read through this, it just seemed like it would be, you know, maybe it does cost a little more, I don't know. But, you know, it's incremental cost. And, and it would seem to me that it would, might be a more efficient use of your resources to have an independent contractor totally responsible for that. So if you've got this street to worry about and this snowstorm, you don't have to worry about, you know, the, the flag down on pole number thirty-one or something, you know what I'm saying? I, I don't know.
Totally understand, I do.
I don't know. But I think this is clearly something that I think needs to be presented to town meeting and let the, let the town meeting decide.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, either way, it's fine. It's, the only thing I worry about is this is town, these are, this is town equipment, this is town stuff, and it needs to be maintained well by the town. You know what I mean? I don't, to let someone else do it, then, you know, we don't want the stuff destroyed, we want it handled correctly, we want it taken care of.
Well, you can, you can handle that in the bid spec, you know that.
Yeah.
But I mean.
I mean, we, you could put something like that to bid, I guess.
Yeah.
I'd be curious to see what a year would cost, but the, the basic number was a thousand plus every time they come in to do it.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, I mean, e- either or, you know, I'm, I'm just kinda, you know, talking about, because this is the first time we've really had a chance to talk about this.
Well, and it's a new thing that we've never done, so I, maybe we'll have to see how it goes, you know, and see if that's a better option.
Well, I think that's, that's key, because, you know, in any town project that, that I've been involved in, going forward, you try to minimize the maintenance going forward. Because, I mean, let's face it, it's, it's very, very difficult to maintain things. I mean, you can look at that parking lot across from Sacred Heart, you know, the bench at Draper Park has been gone, you know, for ten years. We need crosswalks painted, we need curbing's painted, we need weeds, the trees need some attention. So, I mean, I don't want this to be, you know, just lipstick on a pig, you know? So, I mean, if you're gonna do it, that, that's fine. But I, I think you really need to try to minimize the maintenance going forward. Make it as easy as possible to have these, these things in place.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, yeah. And of course.
We can look forward more to contractors.
To come up with the ideas, it's the first time we're doing it, a long time. You try it one year and if something has to be changed or another alternative, we'll, we'll do it, that's all.
With other towns, they do both. They, the town, some towns still get the volunteers to do it and they do it.
And there are probably some things that we haven't thought of, but we, once we go forward, we'll know. But I think this is a great first start.
Yeah, I just wanna, I'm encouraged by the group getting together and I appreciate all the volunteerism that's in the room. I wanna thank you personally. Scotty, I wanna thank you as well, because, you know, having a town employee and a department head being the champion for this. You and I have talked a lot about this over the course of this, helps volunteers and gives them a focus. And frankly, paves the way through a lot of, and navigates through the, through the municipal process. So I just wanna say, first of all, thank you. I like the presentation. When you presented the various options, I think if I were in the room with you when you were choosing, I would've come to the same conclusion. So I like the results that you've come out with as well. I think it was Natick is one of the examples, is very similar to what you're, you're, you're talking about. And anybody who's traveled through it sees what it, it can do to a community. And I think we're talking about, we're talking about small things, right? We're talking about the small things adding up to be something bigger. And we do things sometimes in small incremental steps and learn as we go. I'm all in favor of this. I like what your output is, I like what the, the team and the committee came up with. To the point that I would say it doesn't require, in my opinion, town meeting. We have beautification dollars, we have community improvement dollars that exist already in a fund. I can't think of a better application for those funds in terms of the biom measure TIF as an example. So I'm prepared to support it. And Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we look to the biom measure fund specifically to, to fund this effort and get them kicked off. I had made that motion before.
You can't use the biom.
Why, why can't we?
It's for infrastructure, maintenance and repair.
We've used, we've used, we've used biom measure funds for beautification around town, town hall. So, so if we, if we wanna get into, I would look at the way we've used it in the past. It's very similar to the beautification efforts we're talking here. I think we've used it for mulch before, that's not infrastructure, repair, maintenance. So.
Either way.
Either way, I think, what I, I think what's important.
So, Rick, you could check with town council.
Yeah, I have checked on a couple of gift accounts, too, that might be.
All right.
Money that we have are going to the finance committee. Either way, we're gonna.
I'd ask you to, my motion would be to locate a source of funds that's appropriate, that's legal, allows us to do it. And what's most important to me is that this committee keep moving and that not delay and not wait, but instead have the opportunity to get moving on. My guess is, you're in a time-sensitive period here where you're coming up on the holidays and getting the materials would make a lot of sense now.
Yeah, the wreaths, the wreaths are definitely time-sensitive.
Okay. So, so I would, my motion would be to look to a source of funds, gift accounts, biom measure accounts, whatever it is.
And have Rick come back to us.
Have Rick to come back to us saying that's the source of funds identified. I'd be prepared to approve it tonight.
That would be very helpful, as far as the holiday and the timing of getting the lead time we need to get these things done.
Perhaps.
So I have a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a motion, second?
I, I don't wanna second that motion, because I really think that this should be a town meeting article. I mean, I don't know that this is dissimilar from the July fourth fireworks. It's, it's really, you know, it's not an essential town function. I think it's something that the, the town meeting ought to debate and discuss. And if we wanna talk about being transparent in government, people ought to have a right to weigh in on this, express, you know, hear the presentation, express their opinion and make a decision.
Mr. Chairman, through you, we've appropriated funds for beautification around town hall, plantings, mulch. So, you know, we could take that to, to an extreme and say that everything ought to go through town meeting. The town meeting members have elected their town officials to make decisions. I don't think this is out of the realm of possibility or what the town meeting members or even citizens have, have considered appropriate for elected officials to make decisions. I'm comfortable with making the decision. So I think we have the funds, I think we should allow this group to go forward now.
This is not mulch. You're looking to set up essential, an infrastructure for these decorations and, and then also an ongoing operational maintenance budget. It's, it's, it's almost, you know, its own small department. I mean, I, I just don't know, you know, why that's a problem to have town meeting boat on it.
I don't know, I'm just looking at it as, it sounds like we found a way to make this hard and I think we ought to make it easier, not harder.
I'll second the motion, I think we should get the information from Rick. I just have some ideas later on as far as.
Maybe a way to go a combination. As I understand it, the gift accounts may be enough to purchase the wreath, with the wreaths. And talk, and then appropriate the rest of it, which would be a much smaller amount. So that might be where I might. Just throwing out a suggestion, that would get the wreaths, because I think the wreaths are time-sensitive, as I understand it in talking with Liz and Scott. So it might be, so.
I go to the parade every year and I take my cousins, I talk to a lot of people, and just last year and the past couple of years, it just hasn't looked good on Main Street as far as the lights. There's no spirit. One time it took, last year it took a long time, we're on the phone, Scotty, can you work with Mike, back and forth?
I don't think we had him up for the parade last year.
No.
No, we didn't.
And a lot of people were upset about that, you know? And my cousins were upset, and they hollered at me, so I don't want that to happen again. So let's get the information. And then we'll bring it back in a couple of weeks. In one way or the other, let's try to do what's best. Because I think most people would, you know, Christmas is a, you know, Hanukkah and all that, the menorah is very important. So let's do it right and get the information, and then we can go from there. Okay, so there's been a motion, I second it. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Two in favor, one opposed. And Rick, you'll get, get us that information by the next meeting?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, for your work.
Okay, next was the town administrators' report. Rick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. All budgets under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen are on target for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen. Most people know, the youth center received over seventy-five filed sub bids.
Yes, great.
Renovation project. The date to open the general bids was extended to September eleventh this week to provide an opportunity to clarify some questions on the unit price.
an opportunity to clarify some questions on the unit price section of the bid form. We hope this will lead to better pricing for the project.
Great.
The Milford Pond project bids will be opened tomorrow, September ninth, so we look forward...
I think it's the eleventh now.
I'm sorry, the eleventh, that's right, it was changed, I apologize. Regarding the Milford High School field project, I've been informed the restroom facility is open and was open, completed and inspected, was open for Friday night's opening football game, so we're happy to hear of that. And just one follow-up on the Gibbs Gas Station. In response to requests from the building commissioner, the owner of Gibbs Gas Station has cleaned up the property by cutting the grass, the weeds, removed the vehicles, so hopefully that property is looking in better shape than it was. Just a couple of follow-up items. I was asked by the board to look into fire hydrant maintenance. I did meet with Deputy Fire Chief Mark Nelson to discuss this. He in turn met with Dave Condray and Thomas Degnan of the Milford Water Company. He also spoke with Mariella Stone of the Mass DEP regarding the hydrant and gate maintenance program. And we've learned a number of things. The system was serviced in two thousand and eleven. They are on a three-year maintenance cycle with a third of the hydrants serviced annually. Gate valves also inspected on the same cycle. The Milford Water Company does follow American Water Works Association standards for maintenance, field testing and flushing. On average, four hundred hydrants are maintained and flushed annually. The DEP has visited Milford several times to conduct sanitary surveys and have not had any issues with the program. I am informed that there are no hydrants out of service at this time. If one were to go out of service, it takes approximately two days to return it, unless a complete replacement is required, and then you need to call in Digsafe, et cetera. Also, Mariella Stone of the Mass DEP informed the deputy chief that the gate maintenance programs were recommendations, not necessarily requirements of the consent order. I did speak in detail with Fire Chief Tui, and he indicated that he is satisfied with the maintenance program, and we'll keep an eye on it in the future. So...
Thank you.
If there's any additional information the board would like, I would be happy to follow up. Couple of other items to add. As you also may know, we are looking to install a new sound system at the upper town hall. We had a second demonstration, invited town meeting members and local residents, a number of them did attend. I think it has become apparent that this, any new system will be a significant improvement. They're talking about what they call a line array system. It delivers extremely directional coverage. Loudspeakers are mounted to the wall. We also will include in this an assisted living system, so that people with hearing-impaired issues will be able to get a unit as they walk in, and will help them able to clearly hear the meeting. So this is, again, something we will be looking at, and we'll be considering an article for town meeting.
I thought it was very good. It was an excellent presentation by the representative from the, what was the name of the company, Rick?
Adtech.
Adtech, yeah. He did a nice presentation, and we were all able to walk around the entire upper town hall, up in the chamber and everything, and the sound was very clear. And then he also compared it with the existing system, and you could really tell the difference. So I think that's definitely much needed and a good investment.
Yeah. So I think, you know, for a long time, people had trouble hearing, it's tough to hear what people are articulating, and also for people with, you know, hearing disabilities, this will certainly go a long way. And I think, hey, spend a lot of money upstairs, and people should be able to hear it, so hopefully we can just push it forward, huh?
Yes, we'll be preparing an article for the board's consideration.
Rick, what about the thing about the cul-de-sacs, the intersections and all that?
Uh, yes. Talking about the poles? Yes. The fire chief identified six such poles that are either in an intersection or a cul-de-sac area. Bob Russell from National Grid, town engineer, Vani Reese, highway surveyor Scott Crisafoli, then inspected these poles. And they're taking steps to address two potential, what they call, safety concerns at, one at Cook Street and Jackson Street intersection. What they were going to do is relocate the pole within a new roadway layout to be constructed to eliminate this problem. They also are looking at one at Carvin Road. What they look to do there is increase the diameter of the burmed area to define the direction of the travel for safety and enhance appearance of the cul-de-sac. These were the two that they thought needed attention. The others, right now, we do not think will be issues at this time due to safety or anything like that. Well, there's promise to a follow-up report on the other four for me, but at this time, he did not think those would be an issue, and I will follow up with the town engineer also.
Brian, any questions for Rick?
No, I would agree with that assessment. The other pole locations, I guess, technically are in an intersection, but as you see them, they rest in fairly large islands.
Correct.
Such as school and walnut. I think there's one, is it one forty and...
Asylum.
Asylum, yeah. So, you know, it's, technically, they are in intersections, but the island is very big, so I don't think those are issues.
He did say he would look at them and make a determination, but at first inspection, he did not see those as issues.
Yeah, and you could see the Carvin Road, that needs to be addressed.
That needs to be definitely addressed.
So, yeah, so I would agree with that. So that was good that you had this done.
Okay. Bill, any questions?
Yeah, I would agree that some of the ones that were highlighted were clearly within islands, looked to be safe, looked to make sense, and are organized. The two that are prioritized here are the two that I would prioritize, because, but, you know, I still don't know about that Carvin Road Island. I don't know that building up an island around a pole that's in the middle of a cul-de-sac makes sense. That's this one here.
Yep.
What they wanna do is build up the island around it, and we start taking away from people's ability to back out. You know, usually these islands are short, they're usually hazards for vehicles backing out. You know what I'd like to see is, I'd like to see Vani's recommendations and specifically alternatives for that.
On that one, sure.
Yeah, on Carvin Road. But I agree with the report, I just don't necessarily agree that a larger island around, and you'd have to, I've had the benefit of going down here, looking at the lighting situation. You'd have to see the, you have to see the pole to better understand it, helps to look at and see it. But if we could get some suggestions from Vani, what the alternatives are.
Sure. Okay.
This is still an opportunity for old business.
Yeah.
Yeah, what I wanted to just bring up, light poles, and specifically, it's probably a good time since we just talked about how we were gonna decorate. And what I'd like to do is look to Rick through the chair, I'd like to look to Rick to identify an individual who's just responsible for making sure that they, you know, in the past, it's been town engineer, I'm not sure who it is now, who's responsible for making sure they stay lit.
Okay.
There are times when we can go two, three, four, five lights that go out, and it's not, it's not any one person's job. I'd like to just identify that as a responsibility of some position or office and go from there. I think we're in that situation again now. You know, hopefully Vani can go out and go look at these. Hopefully this time when it's dark out, and identify which ones are in need of maintenance and get updated.
Sure.
Or fixed.
Brian, anything on the old business?
No, no, I don't have anything.
Okay, new business, we have Julia Fenari, request for a block party. This is for the two-bandy lane to twelve-bandy lane. Rick, has this been approved by the police chief?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill, that's unanimous. Permanent firefighters toll for the MDA toll road on, in front of the Spruce Street Fire Station, nine twenty-fourteen, nine AM to twelve PM. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Moving, seconded, that's unanimous. The Milford Traffic Supervisor's appointments of all the people listed on the sheet. Peggy Farrell, Gloria Linnell, Don Cabery, Anne Rokanti, Susan Kozlosky, Suzette Bendoret, Sharon McLean, Frances O'Neil, Donald Ikevelli, Larry Loether, Michelle Abitandazi, Donna Mazone, Mason, Joseph Shirillo, John Shirillo, and then the substitutes would be by seniority, Karen Campbell, Richard Brighioli, Mary Ann Wood, and Donna Lane. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill, that's unanimous. Milford Boosters Club, one-day license. Fino Field, October eleventh, Oktoberfest event, being back, toss tournament. A motion?
Second.
Motion, seconded by Bill, that's unanimous. Resignation of Richard Dean from the CIC. Motion regret, motion by Brian, seconded by Bill, that's unanimous. The next one, Rick, the MAPC appointment, it's usually Larry Duncan, right?
It is, and I prepared a letter for the chairman to send so that we could have him reappointed for a new three-year term.
Brian, motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion to reappoint Larry Duncan again, seconded by Bill, and that's unanimous. Town council, Milford youth sent the lease. Rick?
Uh, yes. Town council negotiated the lease with the attorney for the landlord, Aldo Consigli, to twenty-five, twenty-seven Congress Street. The landlord is SNS Realty Trust. The terms do pretty much mirror the, if you remember, the draft proposal the board looked at last meeting. It's a one-year lease, an option to renew for six months if needed. The actual rent is twenty-five hundred per month, but the youth center will pay eighteen hundred a month and will receive a tax letter. SNS will be donating seven hundred dollars per month. The youth center will pay utilities, landlord will pay taxes. Landlord is solely responsible for all capital and extraordinary repairs. Again, it has been reviewed by town council. I do have, if the board is so inclined, three original leases to be signed tonight. If the board has any questions, obviously, we could review again with town council and attorney Consigli. But it has been reviewed and is before the board tonight. As you know, I did give you an added page seven, just a minor change that was made late in the evening.
Motion today.
I'll move.
Motion by Brian?
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Oppose? Unanimous. We have a letter from Larry Duncan regarding a couple of zoning articles, amendments, that he'd like to bring to town meeting, but they have to be referred to the planning board first for a public hearing. Motion by...
I'll move.
Brian? Seconded by Bill?
I'll second for discussion.
Second, go ahead.
You know, we have a couple of brief paragraphs with some basic rationale, but, you know, I think, and I know this is remand to the zoning board, but, I mean, planning board, but, thank you. But I also wanna just take the opportunity now, you know, to say that there are opportunities when these things are presented, to get a better understanding of what we're remanding, greater than what might be here. And I had talked to Rick earlier about this, and, you know, maybe these are, these are things where, as we communicate more to the public, what the plan is, in addition to the hearings, the presentation by Larry here for something like this, I think it's helpful, because I think the more you communicate, the more you hear what the intent is. We'd still remand to the planning board, but I think media, well, I'm not saying that, you know, I think the time has passed, let it go to the planning, and obviously, we'll be talking about zoning, I mean, articles as they come up, whether we're in support or not, but I think it's just another opportunity to get much greater detail and have it presented. I happen to be in favor of a lot that's happening here, I don't wanna make it sound like I'm being negative towards it.
Yeah, but like Dean said, we could still have him come in on this to give it over to be one of the proprietor of the town meeting.
Yeah, as long as it's not gonna interfere with the planning board and their hearing process, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah.
'Cause it makes sense, and...
'Cause he's gonna come in on either side, too, so we can...
Yeah, maybe we could bring that in, maybe that's an opportunity.
Next meeting, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll figure it out, figure it out, Rick. Okay. And the, thanks, Bill, thanks, Brian. Next, Rick, the fuel oil bid?
Yeah, we went out to bid for the fuel oil contract. The low bidder and only bidder was Peterson Oil Service Inc. with a bid of three dollars fifteen cents per gallon, and I'd asked the board to vote to award the contract to Peterson Oil Service Inc.
Motion by Brian?
Second.
Seconded by Bill? Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Unanimous. Brian, anything else on the new business?
Yeah, I'd like to bring up for the board's discussion, the events of the past weekend. I think all of us got the emails and perhaps the phone calls. There were a lot of people in the town that were, you know, very disturbed about the major concert that occurred at the Tradesman on Sunday. And, you know, when I think back on this, there were so many problems on so many different levels. You know, first, I was upset at us, really, all of us, because we didn't ask the kinds of questions that typically we do, or that perhaps we should have. But, you know, generally, you know, we try to give discretion and good sense to the business owner, we don't wanna be restrictive of what they're doing. But, you know, as I looked at it more and more, I felt less of an onus on us than on the owner. And, you know, I look at this form, the license application, and all that was written on there was, you know, DJ and bands. And when you look at the form, three spots, it talks about describing the live entertainment. You know, on page one, right at the top, where you check off, it says describe on the reverse. At the bottom, it said describe in detail the type of live entertainment to be licensed. And then on the back, it even says live entertainment explained below, times and location. And clearly, you know, it was represent, I mean, I don't know what both of you thought, but I looked at it, I mean, I know we put the deck on, I figured, you know, we'd have an outside band to serve out there. I, you know, I didn't know that this was gonna be, you know, Lollapalooza, you know, Milford style. And when I see the advertisement, the promo that the police chief and the town administrator got for us, this was being circulated, you know, throughout the community, I guess, or online or whatever, I didn't know about it. You know, the potty, the potty that ends all potties is back, to end it all over again. Labor Day bash, eleven bands. You know, I think clearly, the owner is not a rookie, he's been running the operation. And, you know, to be quite honest, I think he pulled a slick move on this board by really not telling us the true intent of what this thing was, to the detriment of people that live a mile away. You know, the email that we got from the young family, the telephone calls, I mean, people in their homes, Sunday night, eight, nine o'clock, I guess it went to eleven-thirty, had to listen to this kind of music. And, you know, at the risk of being out of it, 'cause I also, you know, I don't know what kind of music this is, but, you know, I looked at some of the descriptions here. One of the bands is described as a groovy, sexy, heavy rock band from northern New Jersey with a genre of rock labeled sex groove dick punch. You know, I don't know what that is, and I don't think I wanna know what that is, but if I'm a family and I have young kids in my house at nine o'clock, I don't wanna listen to dick punch music. So I would like to have the owner in here and have a discussion with him so that it's crystal clear in the future, when he plans an event like this, he has an obligation to inform the board and the town of Milford what's gonna be done. Now, that doesn't even get into the other issues. Thank God no one was hurt or injured walking across Route one forty. I mean, that's absolutely ridiculous. You know, I never dreamed that, you know, there would be that kind of an event by that scribbled piece of paper. And I think you, and I think both of you actually commented on, you know, the unprofessionalism and the incompleteness of the application, and unfortunately, you know, I didn't pick up on it, and, you know, the thing went forward. So I really think that we need to have Mr. DeDominic in here so that he understands in the future, if he's gonna plan an event like that, he has a duty, I think, and an obligation to be fully open with us, so that we can ask the kinds of questions that typically we do. You know, what are the plans for parking? What are the plans for crowd control? What are the plans for noise? You know, we didn't do any of that, because I don't think any of us were led to believe that it was anything more than maybe a, you know, a couple of guitars on the deck or something. So I, you know, I would extend that. So I, you know, I would extend that. You know, I'm not talking about discipline because, I mean, I don't think, you know, there was anything violated, although I have no idea why he was not cited, you know, for violation of the noise ordinance. But I really think a conversation needs to occur so that if he's planning events like this in the future, he needs to be more open with us.
No question. Bill?
Yeah, I think, you know, the key learning for me is that certainly, our application process could be more robust. I received a fair amount of phone calls, people whose quality of life was impacted. I'm going to guess that that wasn't the intent of the business owner. The way I look at it, I personally looked at it as a failure of our application process and something we could learn from going forward. You know, it said bands, I'm not going to defend the process. I actually took a ride by while it was going on. And I personally observed what I would have considered, things that were unsafe as it related to parking. They were parked nearly up to Asylum Street, all the way up 140 with the, you know, butting a guardrail and having to walk beyond the white line in the road of 140. You know, so there's a host of things that I've made clear to town administrator, the things I wouldn't be supportive of, they have a better parking plan. And I look at the, what we've received in a package today from the town administrator and the chief, where they've worked on the application process. I've given some feedback to it. I think we can do much better. You know, I think one of the other things that came about as a result of this, I think they rearranged how the band was facing. And so that represents a change from last year. I didn't see it because I wasn't present, other than driving by. But, you know, I don't know. It's impacting quality of life for residents, and that's where it takes this board and requires our attention. It requires us, in my opinion, to make a more robust application process. You know, my understanding, Senator Moore was at the event earlier in the day, so, you know. Yeah, so, you know, it's, I'm not real concerned about whether, you know, I don't know that the board is going to regulate the free speech and the language of the music, but we can most certainly regulate the volume and the time it's played and how their parking, how their vendors are managed. And I think that's within our purview and control. And I think the application process that Rick and the chief have put together really satisfy all of my concerns, short of, I think it requires one more page, we talked about that, and the town employees' feedback, signatures of the people who have approved the site plan and all of that. I don't have any great desire to see the, to see the license holder. To be honest with you, again, I take it as our responsibility. I think he met the minimum requirements that we had of our license. Our license process was, is not very good, and I think this is a learning for me. And I agree. I agree with Brian, your comment that it's a responsibility of this board to do better. And, I don't know, I'm happy with the way, the direction it's taken with the permitting process changes.
I was in Worcester most of last week, well, all of last week, and I had a chance to call Rick a couple of times on this issue, about the application process, tightening it up. I remember on the carnival situation with the permits, when it was on Hamilton Street, it was a situation that we didn't think of certain things. We worked with the both chiefs on that. We came up with a very good system now. I just think when he came in, he was very, very quiet. I think there, he could have explained a little bit more information to us. I mean, I mean, to me, bands, to me, one or two bands, but when you have 10 or 11 bands, stuff like that, you got to be honest with the board. And you have to provide information. Just can't sit there and be silent. And I think, you know, this board goes, you know, bends over backwards to try to help people all the time. And so when someone comes before us, you know, do it right, explain things, make sure the application. And I think from now on, Rick, if anybody submits something that's handwritten crayons and all that, and it's not legible, you just say, you got to come back. Either type it out, have someone write it for you. And, you know, you got to have respect for the people who are reviewing this information because I just think that's one of the things. It has to be a two-way street. Maybe on our part, maybe the application process wasn't complete enough. So we can say that. But on the other part, when someone comes in and wants to do something, you know, tell the board, hey, listen, it's going to be this, we're going to have bands, a lot of people. Make sure the police department knows, the parking, all that stuff, so.
Well, in this case, we approve without the applicant even being present.
Well, he came in before one time on the, on the deck. And that's when I talked about the application process not being.
Okay.
Make sure, and he was pretty, matter of fact, he was looked kind of bored when he was in there, talking about the...
And he didn't give us any indication that night that these are the kind of events that he was planning.
So, hey, we do the best we can. We try to be upfront with people. We try to give people the benefit of the doubt, but in turn, they have to be, they have to be upfront with us. So I would agree. Let's have him in at a future meeting. And also, Rick, continue to work with the chief, fire chief, in really tightening up the application process and then bring that to the board to see if we okay it or if we have any other opinions, okay?
Okay.
All right. Bill, do you have anything on the new business?
No, nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Oh, I had one other item, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, there's a sign, no right turn on Main Street at the intersection with South Main, as you're heading north on South Main, looking to turn right onto Main Street. And I know that was put up in the state project, and that was one of the signs that they talked about with the then-town engineer and also the police chief, that we were going to revisit after that project to see if it's in fact necessary. That South Main Street queues up tremendously, and any type of outlet that you could possibly have to allow people to go to Main Street, I think would be helpful. So if we could have Tom and Vani take a look at that, if at all possible.
Sure.
Have it be removed.
Yeah, we've removed one similar.
Yeah. Thank you, that's...
Yeah, no. Rick, can we, at the next meeting, have John Erickson?
Sure.
And then talk about the issues that the board has brought up and also some of the things that have been happening.
Yep.
I called him on three issues. There was one on West Street, there was one on East Main Street, but there's still another house that the landlord, that this resident told me is a problem. So it's either, so I gave you those numbers, so if you could check with him and have him report to the board.
Yes.
I'd like to invite, what's her name, the lady from Verizon to the next meeting, if possible. Is it Jill Reddish? Excuse me?
Yes, Reddish, I believe it is.
Yes. Because I think, I think it would be good for her to explain to everyone out there and also us, as far as the programming, the pricing, all the things that are happening. I mean, every once in a while, we get something saying something's coming off, something's going on, and it usually means a cost to the, to the subscribers. So I don't know anything about it. So it'd be good for her to educate the board and the public on exactly what's going on. And if she's responsible to the residents, I know, as far as Verizon, the other, what's the other company?
Comcast?
Comcast. I know Frank Foss is always, in the past, he's willing to take calls from residents, explaining the bill, any questions they may have. So I don't know if this lady's that accessible, so I'd like to have her come in.
Sure.
Okay? So John, next meeting, Verizon, next meeting. Clarification and any additional information he has on the neighborhood task force, town hall security? We can talk about that later. And the other thing I'd like to do is, you know, we talked about Main Street tonight. I don't know, I just drive down Main Street, I'm in town all the time. I brought it up before, as far as some of the storefronts. Now, I know in some cases, it's limited in what we can ask people to do, but I think as far as being aesthetically pleasing, you know, not having, you know, cardboard signs slanted, all kinds of stuff in the window fronts, I just don't think it's conducive to business on Main Street, people driving by. So what I'd like to do, Rick, I'd like you to, you know, have a discussion with Chamber of Commerce, Town Planner, John Erickson, about the signs on Main Street. You know, what can be placed, what, you know, isn't proper, either by bylaw or even an education process. And then I would like to invite the property owners on Main Street, and we can have a discussion with them. You know, maybe some people don't know. Maybe some people are, you know, own those stores and, you know, live out of town or whatever the case may be. But I just think that, you know, as time goes on, it just keeps creeping up Main Street. And I know most people don't like it. I have a lot of meetings in my office, and when people come in from Springfield and, you know, Sherwin and all that, they say, you know, what's happening to the Main Street? And I just think that it might be something where if we have a meeting, try to educate people, tell them what the bylaws are, you know, show some pictures and say, okay, do you think this is good for a business? They have all kinds of signs, crooked signs, misspellings on signs and all that. A long time ago, we spent a long, a lot of money on facades, you know, trying to have uniformity, consistency with the storefronts. And now, some of those places are so cluttered, I don't know how you would go into it or even see what's in there. So I'd like to try that, you know. Probably nothing will come of it, but I would like to try it. And so, Rick, if you could, you know, have a preliminary discussion with the Chamber of Commerce, Larry Duncan, John Erickson, and maybe we can meet with the, some of the property owners, you know, begin, you know, lower Main Street and then try to move out. So I'd like to see that happen, okay?
Yes.
Okay. I think we have one correspondence from, this is regarding the abatement that's given to the property taxes of senior citizens who work in community service. I think we got a letter from the Men and Board of Selectmen. Rick, I think I asked you to do some preliminary investigation on this, and you talked to Priscilla about it?
I talked to Priscilla, and it seems to me, at least in my opinion, to be a good idea to send such a letter. Certainly would help our seniors.
Can you, not tomorrow, but Wednesday, maybe talk to our representative about this?
Sure.
And then maybe we can, I don't know if it's time sensitive, but maybe get the information, see what John says, and then maybe we can talk about it at the next meeting?
Yeah.
It's actually the US.
Federal.
This is federal.
Yeah.
Yeah, McGovern, okay, yeah. Okay.
And I think it's, I think it's a good idea. I mean, the state, you know, does not, you know, treat that volunteer time as income.
Correct.
But the federal government still is through the IRS, so, you know, I don't think that that's right anyway, you know? So regardless of what the state, I mean, I think, I agree with the state's position, and I don't think it should be treated as, as income. So I'm perfectly happy sending our support. I'm not sure if this is a bill that Jim McGovern is sponsoring and they want us to go to McGovern.
Yeah.
Or if we can contact Kennedy ourselves.
I can reach out to Senator.
I think you have a consensus from this board.
Yeah, let's go forward.
You know, I think we can do to help our senior citizens. Send a CC to John and Richard, because I'm sure they're always talking to Representatives Kennedy and Neil. Neil was here for the Milford Farm Project. He still feels very close to Milford, so he could also try to help out, okay?
Yep.
Okay, we have the Attorney General's Last Drink Report. I believe there are a couple of establishments, and what we usually do is notify the establishments that they've been on the Last Drink. I believe one is the Tradesman, and what was the other one?
TD's Pub.
TD's Pub.
Pub and the Tradesman.
Yeah, so we'll notify those establishments, Rick?